I call this the August 16th, 2022 meeting of Lincoln County Commission Order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Mr. Milton Martin. Milton is the minister at the Pleasant Hill Baptist Church. Our pledge allegiance tonight will be given by grandchildren of Steve Graham, and that's Hadley Graham and Sarah Beth. Hadley is a nine-year-old. She's a fourth grader and attends Blount School. She enjoys being on the farm, has a passion for animals, and wants to be a veterinarian. Her favorite color is blue. Her family means the world to her. And she's the daughter of Scott and Whitney Graham, and the granddaughter of Steve and Lorraine Graham, and Steve and Linda Force. Also joining her tonight is Sarah Beth Graham. And Sarah Beth, she is 11 years old. She's a sixth grader and attends Ardmore High School. She enjoys gymnastics and cheerleading, and her favorite color is blue. Her favorite artist is Morgan Wallen, and enjoys playing with her animals and spending time with her family. She's the daughter of Brett and Lauren Graham, also the granddaughter of Steve and Lorraine Graham, and the granddaughter of Donna, Jo Curtis, and John Curtis. If you would, please stand for the invocation.
Let's pray together. Our fathers, we vow again the day of your presence. We thank you for this day and the blessings if you allow us to enjoy the privilege to meet together. And I ask the blessings on each commissioner tonight. I pray you'll give them heavenly wisdom, trust that they'll make decisions that will bring glory and honor to your name, and more that there be a blessing to this county. Thank you for all that they do, and we'll praise you and thank you for it because we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sarah Beth Hadley and Mr. Milton Martin. I know we're getting started late, and we got a few things that we usually get straightened out before we do. The court running late has caused us to run a little late too. So we're waiting to get some of our electronics situated before our roll call.
Okay. I have 24 commissioners present. Do you want us?
All right, everyone listen here. Only announcement I have, you know, it's a bittersweet night. We do have a Ford Commissioner that won't be returning next month. And we're going to have a celebration of service for those in our community in the early fall. So we will be doing some recognition and things at that time. But I just want you all to know how much I appreciate every one of you and what you've contributed, no matter how many years you've served. We've had Steve Graham at 44 years and Donnie at 40. And then it falls off a little after that. Mr. Brady, thank you for all that you've done also. But of all the time that I've been associated with the commission as a commissioner and as the mayor, this has been the most cooperative and most productive commission I've been associated with. So thank you for all those that will be returning. The new ones that may be in the audience, I look forward to serving you all. But we will have an official ceremony for the retirement of those that won't be with us next time. But thank you for your service. I would entertain a motion for approval for the June 19th, 2022 meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Randy Bradford, Commissioner Bradford makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second, Mr. Young? Seconded. Any questions on those minutes? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. You should have received eight monthly committee meeting minutes and seven quarterly meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion acknowledging the receipt of those.
Move.
Commissioner Shroy makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Ewen seconds it. All those in favor of acknowledgement of those, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. You should have received an update model of ethics policy in your packet. This is one of the things that has been adopted as law under the Tennessee Code annotated. Lincoln County was part of the cause of this updating. Thanks to Ed Simms and Colton Bradford for getting those changed, and I represent the senator for getting that. Any questions about that update? I would entertain a motion that we adopt that and get that sent in, and that is our policy of ethics. Now, the motion that affects Commissioner Turner makes a motion. Seconded by Commissioner Britt. Any questions on this? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Our next one is consideration of approval to reappoint Brian Rutledge, Ernie Morgan, and Randall Slaton as our judicial commissioners. You should have received a letter, Judge Meyer, requesting they be reappointed. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Walma makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Commissioner Ogul. Any questions on these? All in favor of approval of those three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. The next item will be covered in our, let me see. Yes, the next one will be covered in budget, so we're skipping over that. It is an item in our budget. The next five items are Nancy Harris, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Good evening, everybody. First on your agenda is a consideration to call for public hearing. This is for case number CR 2022-4. The state did some amendments to their bills, and this one is State Bill 2849. And really, all it is is clean up housework. It's to put some language into our text. And this one is going into the zoning resolution. I can read it for you if you want. You should have it in your standing report if you had any questions on it.
Any requests for a reading on that? Okay. Is it okay if we take the first two items together? Okay?
The next one is also to call for a public hearing. This is case number SR 2022-3. Same thing, the state passed eight. Let's see, this would be House Bill 2534. And this is to add language into the subdivision regulation that they are requiring. Minor public view.
Okay. Do I have a motion approving public hearing next month prior to that meeting at 5:30?
Move.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion for call for that public hearing. Do I have a second? Commissioner King makes second. Any questions on this item? All in favor of calling for a public hearing on those two items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next three items. We'll take those one at a time.
Okay. First one is a zoning request file number 2022-R4. Charles, I'm sorry, Charles Jones Veterinary Clinic. This is to zone it from urban growth boundary to C1 general commercial. This is located on Huntsville Highway 2694, Huntsville Highway. We had a public hearing earlier tonight, and there were no comments on this particular case.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Move to approve.
Okay. Commissioner Tyler makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ewen seconds it. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item.
This is item 2022-R5. Charles Ledger. This is to zone, same scenario. Zone the property from urban growth boundary to general commercial. And this is located right at where the city limit starts on Huntsville Highway. It's Huntsville Highway and Wells Hill. We did have the public hearing again on this one. There were some comments, and most of them were attributed to trying to restrict traffic onto Wells Hill Road. And Charles did state that he would be willing to place a restriction within the deed that no ingress egress would be granted onto Wells Hill. Property runs right onto Huntsville Highway. That's the most practical way to access it.
Does that need to be incorporated in the motion to change the, or not change because you're putting a zone on that property, correct? This is not a change of zone?
It's not a change. It's applying a C1 general commercial. I would, you know, if there's.
That was the objection was in the public hearing that they requested no ingress egress onto the old Wells Hill Road, which circles behind the property. It has access on 431, 231 at road level. Any questions about that? I would entertain a motion to that effect then.
I'm voting motion.
Okay. Commissioner Tyler makes a motion, and Commissioner King seconds it. Would that be incorporated in that motion? Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Ms. Harris?
And the last item is file number 2022-R6. This is also to zone from urban growth boundary to C1 general commercial. And this is for Chad and Angela Mullins. This is located at 310 Ardmore Highway.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Bryant makes a motion. Commissioner Shroy seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Our next is IDB report. Michael Dempsey.
Dempsey's not here. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Recognize Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Fellow commissioners, citizens of Lincoln County. We're going to start our industrial development board report tonight by talking about Aaron's Co. and Project Tiller. Since our last meeting that we had where we went over this stuff, we finalized the deal on this project, which resulted in an investment of $43 million and a creation of 369 jobs here in our community. We held the official announcement on June the 2nd. Governor Lee was in town. Commissioner Roth and the executives from Aaron's Co., they will occupy the remaining 550,000 square feet of the direct pole or manor building, and have been working on modifications since March. So the company's on the schedule to kick off production in April of '23 and going to provide excellent job opportunities for the citizens of our community. Also want to talk tonight about our Tennessee ECD Site Development Grant. The bids for this grant to project Clear and Grub and construct a 250,000-square-foot base access road and great parking dock area in the lot 10 of the Fayetteville Lincoln County Industrial Park came in way over budget, surprise, surprise. We were able to work with the state to reduce the scope of our project, and we rebid the revised scope at no bids, and in slightly above budget. So we were able to move forward with that project. Lincoln Paying was awarded the bid, and they are set to begin construction on September 1st of '22, and it's supposed to be completed by December the 12th of '22. So excited about that. The Horizon Industrial Park, which is our new industrial park way down on Huntsville Highway, continue to work with TDOT on this, on the construction of the access road into the park. TDOT has officially begun work on the design, engineering portion of this project, and we hope to have some preliminary drawings to review in the early fall. We're also working with the state and with Austin Consulting to achieve the Tennessee Select Tennessee Site Certification. We've been issued the Step 2 application and looking at a site visit in the fall after we get all these preliminary and access road drawings. The access road is an item needed for certification for that park. IDB has also been looking at a potential new spec building, and the board reached an agreement with Aggracel to construct a 50,000-square-foot spec building on our eight-acre site that we have at Runway Center. Aggracel will fund the project with an agreement from the IDB to lease the building back if the building has not been sold or leased two years after the completed operations is received on the building. This will basically give us three years to move the building. IDB has had input into the design of the building, approval of the specs, as well as input on which contractor and stuff will be used. So in our agreement, we included a maximum construction cost of 3.75 million based on the construction costs that we had put together. I think we did a similar building for a little over $2 million the last time. And so we sent out, got three bids on the project. Dawes Brothers came in at 5.2 million. Bike Construction was 6.5 million. And Lee Adcock Construction was 5.1 million. So obviously, these bids came in well above our defined cost. The board had decided to stand firm on the 3.75 million and go back to Aggracel to see if they're willing to move forward, being responsible for the additional amount. So they're currently evaluating that, and they're going to get back to us. We really need a building desperately. The Invest Prep, TBA Invest Prep is another grant that the IDB's been working on. We applied for this round of funding for due diligence. On the last remaining lot that we have in Old Bullington Industrial Park, this is the site between the Sunquid Center and CNS Plastics. Been working on that, had a great visit with them down here. TBA's tech service team worked with our engineer to establish cost estimate for construction, and we submitted that to the Invest Prep, Invest Prep team. So we look to, we received notification on July 14th that our grant application has been approved, and TBA must perform their own due diligence on this site, which will not be completed until spring of '23. So we're kind of waiting on those award notifications, which will be announced in December of '22, to see whether we get that. And then we'll have to wait on TBA to finish their due diligence. So that project estimated about 1.5 million. We continue to see a steady flow of projects from the state and TBA, as well as contacts from companies. We've received 42 referrals since our last update. We submitted our eight-acre, 26-acre, eight-acre site, our 26-acre pad-ready site, and our lot 10 in the Fayetteville Lincoln County Industrial Park for seven of those projects. 14 of those projects, just kind of let you know what we're missing out on, I guess. 14 of these projects were seeking a building a lot more than 50,000, up to 125,000 square feet. So missed some opportunities not having a building there. Our new spec building would be a 50,000-square-foot expandable up to 125,000. So if we could get that thing going, you know, that would be something that we could submit on a lot of those. We had six of those referrals that were seeking existing buildings of more than 150,000 square feet, all the way up to a million square feet. Obviously, we didn't, and not going to have anything that size. Eight of these referrals required rail, which we don't have close by. And four were seeking large sites up to 1,000 acres, which we don't have anything like that either. So just kind of letting you know what's out there, what people are looking for. As far as the site visits that we did get, we've got a project pencil that we've named. It's a German pencil manufacturer. They were founded in 1835. We submitted the site for that. They are interested in the new spec building. So we submitted the building layout along with that stuff for them. So excited about the possibilities there. Also have Project Chrysler, which is a medical device company. They originally had visited or had solicited information back in January, and the state reached out to them and asked them to come to Lincoln County since they expanded their search. And so they're going to consider a site. We showed our eight-acre site along with the building layout, the renderings. Also showed the company the building at East 40, East Park Drive out there just to show them what kind of quality building that we've got and that we're constructing out there. So after further discussions with this company, they are interested in leasing a facility and providing specific size and needs that they have. So we're working with Aggracel to prepare a build-to-suit proposal for them, which would be 125,000-square-foot facility, possibly on our 26-acre site that we have. So this proposal was submitted, and discussions continue with those company executives. Something I found really interesting. We had a host of visits from the Japanese External Trade Organization. At the request of one of the state's directors of business development, Ms. Victoria Hirsberg, appreciate that, Per. This delegation consisted of 25 Japanese individuals who represent 20 different Japanese companies who do not do any business in Tennessee. And they were here to learn about doing business in Tennessee. We had scheduled tours with Airtech and also with CNS Plastics so they could interact with the companies that are doing business in Tennessee and those with ties to Japan. So Elaine gave them a tour and a brief overview of the community, and they spent two days here in Tennessee. So that's exciting news. Copperwell continues expansions on buildings at 49 and 40 East Park Drive are well underway. These expansions will add 162 new jobs, well over the initial projections of about 40 jobs. So excited about that. The three-star grant program, that's something the IDB's involved in. Our current project has been for a while to purchase welding equipment for the TCAT and the LCA to enhance our workforce needs, and also to get some blue light signage along Elk River and trail signs for Wells Hill Park. So bring awareness of those assets in our community. Want to thank Elaine and Emmy Lou and the board for all the hard work that they do. Lots of things going on at the IDB, so we're excited about that. Anybody have any questions that would like answered? Be happy to do that.
Any questions for Commissioner Cunningham? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Ready for our budget committee report? Commissioner Ogul?
Budget Committee meeting report for the August 16th, 2022 recess session of Board of Commissioners. Budget Committee accounted as legislative body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met at the Sunday of due notice on August 2nd, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. at the Lincoln Central Academy of Libraries. Members present with Steve Graham, Brady Revis, Randy Bradford, Anthony Taylor, Jay Ewen, Ricky Bryant, Donnie Ogul, and Doug Cunningham. Co-hosts present with County Mayor Bill Newman, Finance Director Dicky Trinum, Deputy Finance Director Tracy Kendall, Solid Waste Director Dana Gentry, County Attorney Ed Simms, Fire EMA Director Doug Campbell, Maintenance Supervisor Ricky Pierce, Commissioner Douglas, Hunter Haynes, Mitchell, and Gene. Item one, the Bullington Industrial Park Site Building Request. A, Mayor Newman requested on behalf of the IDB that Lincoln County be the applicant on a grant with the state for building a pad in the industrial park located on Winchester Highway. This is the last lot left between Motlow and CNS Plastics for the Republican Party. This would be at no cost to the county. We had a motion by Commissioner Ogul, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, advised unanimously to approve. Lincoln County has the applicant to apply for a grant with the state to build a pad in the industrial park located on Winchester Highway.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Make motion to approve.
Commissioner Bradford makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas seconded that. The point of clarification on this, the reason we're having to do this is we have the grant as Doug spoke to that's covering what I call the Sarverimposy lot there. That won't be finished. That's the one that Lincoln Paying is doing. It will be December before it's finished, and this grant is due before the end of September. And we cannot have two grants under IDB going at the same time. So for us to help them out, we will be the applicant, but they'll be doing all the work and any funds would be coming from them. If there's any questions about that, that's the reason it's under Lincoln County. All in favor of approval of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogul?
B, Mayor Newman informed committee members of the closing on the 11 acres Wilson Parkway property on August 2nd, 2022, future home of the emergency management office. Loading statements, documents are provided. Possession of the property will be August 19th, 2022, with time given to the previous owners to clear out personal property. Information item one. C, Mayor Newman updated members on the status of the Fayetteville Lincoln County Animal Shelter. Ongoing conversations are continuing with the employees of the animal shelter and the city mayor and city administrator. Commissioner Ewen inquired about the land the county previously had interest in buying. However, the price of that land has increased considerably, and Mayor Newman is of the opinion that the county is no longer interested in purchasing property. Currently, the city is still trying to move forward with future plans with Fayetteville Lincoln County Humane Society. D, Mayor Newman informed members of being contacted by the Friends of the Patrick concerning a monetary donation mainly for rehab equipment. Mayor Newman recommended a $100,000 donation. Commissioner Taylor expressed, due to a change of ownership, that Huntsville Hospital would now be responsible for the Patrick building as well as its contents. His recommendation would be to wait and see under the new ownership what Huntsville Hospital's plans would be for the Patrick rehab building. Commissioner Taylor requested to be on record as not being against the monetary donation, but under the new direction and ownership, he recommended that we wait. Commissioner Bryant recommended that he would like to see any donated, any money donated to go toward cost-saving efforts such as upgrades to LED lighting and things of that nature. That would always save money in the future. Commissioner Ogul advocated for a donation of $50,000 as Friends of the Patrick stepped up for the wellness portion of Patrick when it was in question of staying open. Commissioner Ewen expressed her thoughts of the Patrick no longer being a county-owned building, and if any money donated would be specifically for the Friends of the Patrick that we possibly need to wait. Commissioner Cunningham expressed his concern of appropriating the funds and then Huntsville Hospital also funding themselves for the same cause. With other funding projects through the ARP funds for actual county-owned buildings and projects, we could definitely continue the conversation for future appropriations from the requesters. Commissioner Revis expressed his concern that the county commission has presented the request previously, unlike some of the other funded requests, and Friends of the Patrick request for appropriation should be seriously considered. We had a motion by Commissioner Ogul, seconded by Commissioner Revis, and four yes and four against. Vote was tied and failed to recommend approval of appropriating $50,000 of the ARP funds for the Friends of the Patrick. This recommendation will still go to the commission for a final vote.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know that we appropriate the $50,000 to the Friends of the Library for purposes they seek to benefit the units.
Okay. Commissioner Graham seconded that. Any discussion?
I'm sorry.
I move it.
Any objection to recognizing John Richardson at this time? If you'll come to the microphone, John, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Honorable.
You may not have said it, but you have thought for it.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for hearing me out, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Friends of the Patrick, and I've got a glove for that place, a lot of folks that are sitting up here with me do, and a lot of you out here do, I know, but I'm going to start asking, may I see a show of hands for just folks that use the Patrick now or have it in the past, but that here. We've got quite a few. And I'm here tonight to ask you to consider giving us and appropriating this money to us. If we had stood still and not done anything when the Patrick, when it was announced it was going to be closed, it wouldn't be open. Thank goodness it is, because it's quite an asset to this community. And I hear Commissioner Cunningham standing up here talking about the IDB board, you've been hard at work, it's obvious. Here you talk, and those folks are going to need somewhere to go work out and stay healthy and what have you. But we're Friends of the Patrick, we're there, we're asking for money because of that, we need a lot of things, and a lot of things need to be improved there. And yes, Huntsville Hospital is taking over. Yes, they're going to come in and do some things, and Mary Best Sales has been very impressive when we met with her. I know she's planning on, they're going to plan on doing some stuff on the outside of the building, possibly the roof, painting the outside of the building, getting it secure. But you know, we need equipment and these type of things inside also. And Huntsville Hospital, I think their main focus right away is going to be the building. Whether it be painting the building, whether it be, you know, LED lighting, as Mr. Graham had mentioned, whether it be the roof, whether it be the central heating air, a lot of systems that are going to require a lot of money. We're here as the Friends of the Patrick, asking that you consider giving us the money so we can help improve the Patrick, getting equipment such as treadmills, elliptical equipment. You know, we need a hack squat rack, we need bicycles for people to sit on and ride, we need dumbbell sets, we need a lot of things that need improving right away that our members, everybody's raised their hand in here, uses. I'm up there quite a bit with Mayor Newman, he's on the elliptical machine, I'm in here with Ed Simms, he's on his way, I can't keep up with either one of them, but I try. But with that said, and do a little bit of research on this, the health system has never received any money in the county. The county commission has never allotted any money to the Patrick, and we're asking for one time, you know, please consider giving us Friends of the Patrick an allotment to use for the betterment of this community. I mean, I'm up there walking quite often, and I see the police side, we serve the community or something like that, that's what we're trying to do as the Friends of the Patrick, serve the community, improve the community for everybody, giving them a place to stay healthy, to get healthy, to improve their health, to rehab, and they need good equipment to do it, and the equipment just has not been updated in so long. It's been probably thirty years since a lot of this stuff's been updated, and you know, we're asking that you consider doing that, and my thought originally was, I was going to be coming here asking for tax dollars that I helped pay, but it's American Recovery Plan, ARP money that's out there, it's a one-time thing, and I certainly respect the fact of folks that say, well, you know, let's wait, but I respectfully disagree, due to the fact that if we wait, it's going to be gone, and there are things that we need now. We need that now, we need equipment now, we need the, you know, memberships are growing, we're working to increase that, we've been a very proactive bunch as the Friends of the Patrick. We bought fans, we've done quite a lot of stuff, I don't have a list of everything we've done, we bought quite a few fans, we've got a Smith machine, which is a thing that helps people do squats where they don't have to have a spotter, where they won't get hurt. All these things cost a lot of money, and we've done that, we've got about fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars in the account now, just from the, you know, Friends, Friends of the Patrick, folks that join that are.
Thirty seconds, John.
Lifetime friends, and we're asking that you please consider giving us this money. It's a worthy cause, it's a great thing for this community, it serves so many purposes, and it will serve folks that are coming here and getting with interest. And a lot of you all use it, and please consider giving us this money and letting us, allowing us to use it for the betterment and for the improvement of Lincoln County, which I love, and everybody here does, and if you didn't or I didn't, none of us would be here. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion? There you go, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
No.
Okay, we have one no, two nos. Okay, Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Taylor. Okay. Next item, Commissioner Ogles? Motion passes.
E, Federal Lincoln County Chamber of Commerce request. Chamber of Commerce requested Carolyn Denton was recognized by, let me start over. Chamber of Commerce represented Carolyn Denton was recognized by Mayor Newman for the request donation for the windows and roofing for the Chamber of Commerce building. Request was for nine thousand dollars for purchasing and installation of vinyl windows and five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the roof. Total request of fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars from the county. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Ogles, passed unanimously to recommend approval of appropriating from the ARP funds totaling fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the Chamber of Commerce for new vinyl windows and roof.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Motion.
Commissioner King makes a motion. Commissioner Taylor seconds. One note on that, the city, this is one half, the city is appropriated to save amount, the roof has been put on, and we would be paying back the one half of that, but the windows, they have new bids on that, and that would put those windows in. Any questions or discussions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogles?
F, Capitol needs assessment revision. Due to the remodeling on the old police building to now serve as the archive building, it was brought to the attention that the cost would be less than eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Discussion by Mayor Newman was had on the amount of money appropriated for the Wilson Parkway property being only the purchase price of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and that amount not being enough to cover remodeling costs. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars to cover costs for remodeling the Wilson Parkway EMA building. This would decrease the cost for the archive building from eight hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred and fifty thousand, and increase appropriations of six hundred and seventy-five thousand to eight hundred and seventy-five thousand for the Wilson Parkway EMA office. After further discussions from Commissioner Ewan on the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand, estimated cost being a sufficient amount to remodel the old police building for archives, and Maintenance Director Ricky Pierce concerned with the amount as well, concerning humidity control, fire suppression, and security costs. Commissioner Cunningham went through his motion for the two hundred thousand dollar appropriation. Then we had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed unanimously to recommend changing his appropriation amount to a one hundred thousand dollars for EMA totaling seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and leaving seven hundred and fifty thousand for the remodeling of the old police building to serve as the new archive building.
Okay, we have a subsequent motion in our today's budget meeting that will change this. Do you want to do that at this time or wait till the very end, because this is really adequate now with that subsequent motion?
I'll do it now if you want to.
Let's do it now, okay.
The Budget Committee of the County of that slate body is Lincoln County, Tennessee, map of the sun due notice on August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at five P.M. in the Lincoln County Conference Room. All the members were present. Others present was County Mayor Newman, Finance Director Dicky Trinum, Solid Waste Director Dana Gentry, County Attorney Ed Simms, Fire EMA Director Doug Campbell, Maintenance Supervisor Ricky Pierce, and Register D. Randy Delau. Item one, county building, Capitol Outlay League set. Discussion was held on the obligated amount needed to fund the purchase price of the Wilson Parkway property and the renovation to serve as the new EMA building. Based on a one million dollar appropriation less the purchase price of six hundred and seventy-two thousand thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents, this would leave three hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents for renovation to both update the Wilson Parkway property to serve as the new EMA office and the renovation cost to update the current EMA building to serve as a central station. Discussion on the obligated amount needed to fund the renovation of the old police building to serve as our county archive building was held and determined that an estimated amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be needed for this project. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Ogles, and passed unanimously to approve appropriating one million dollars for the cost of renovation of the Wilson Parkway property to serve as a new EMA office and converting the current EMA office to a central station, and eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to renovate the old police building to serve as the county archive.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Motion approved.
Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions? Everybody understand? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Commissioner Ogles?
To close out that meeting, there's no further bid, and it's been presented. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewan, and passed unanimously to adjourn at five sixteen P.M.
Thank you.
G, we had an appropriation for the Federal Lincoln County Art Center, appropriation request for the Carriage House players. Commissioner Ewan discussed her concerns regarding an appropriation of twenty thousand dollars for a new roof on the Lincoln County Art Center. Commissioner Cunningham requested this be referred back for consideration, but also due to the fact that until actual county-owned buildings and projects have been taken care of, that any money for other projects should be put on hold. Once some of the county's needs are met, other outside requests could be considered with any leftover fund. We had a motion by Commissioner Revvis, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, passed seven yes, one no, to recommend deferring the request for the art center and carriage house player.
Okay, a motion to concur with the Budget Committee is a motion to defer on this item. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Young, you make the motion to concur. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second, Commissioner Bryant. Any questions? All in favor to concur, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogles?
Item two, Commissioner Glenn Douglas, property assessor's request, additional parcel update. Mr. Douglas spoke on behalf of the Lincoln County Property Assessor's Office on the need for two new laptops, protectors, and battery backpack up to backup to serve in the field of assessment. This is a total cost of three thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-four cents requested from Fund Balance. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ogles, passed unanimously to recommend approval of three thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-four cents from Fund Balance to fund the purchase of two laptops, two protectors, and battery backup for the property assessor's office.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Thank you, motion approved.
Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Britt makes the second. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogles?
Item three, Circuit Court Clerk request from Judge Gerard and Judge Burke. Circuit Court Clerk Lisa Simmons presented a request from both Judge Gerard and Judge Burke, an increase paid for them for court liaison and attendance from seventy-five dollars per day to a hundred and twenty-five per day, paid from the Circuit Court Clerk line item one oh one, fifty-three, one hundred, dash, one eighty-nine. Other salaries and wages, which this would be an additional six thousand dollars to that line item. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham and seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed seven yes, one abstain, to recommend approval of the rate for them be revised from seventy-five per day to a hundred and twenty-five per day, increasing one oh one, fifty-three, one hundred, dash, one eighty-nine, by six thousand dollars from Fund Balance.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner King makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds. Any questions, comments, or discussions? Any abstentions? I think, okay, I have one abstention. Commissioner Ogles abstains from the vote on this one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved with one abstention.
Mr. Chairman, I need to back up to the last, I need to abstain from the vote of the property assessors.
Okay. Any objections to changing the vote to an abstention and twenty-three yes votes? Let it be recorded then that Commissioner Douglas abstains on the previous vote, that will be item number three. Commissioner Ogles?
Item four, Solid Waste Chairman Doug Cunningham. Commissioner Cunningham discussed the need for a rate increase on the present eight-dollar residential solid waste fee to twelve dollars, and commercial rates being increased to two dollars, by two dollars, effective October the first, twenty-twenty-two. This is upon recommendation from the Solid Waste Committee meeting held prior to the meeting. Motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Revvis, unanimously passed to recommend approval for the Solid Waste Committee's recommendation, revising the current solid waste fee of eight dollars to twelve dollars for residential customers, and two dollars increase for commercial customers per dumpster size, effective October the first, twenty-twenty-two.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Haynes makes the second. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Commissioner Young votes no. Anyone else? Twenty-three yes votes, one no. Commissioner Young makes a no vote. Okay, next item, Commissioner Ogles?
Item five, Finance Director Trinum presented the following request. A, the one oh one general purpose fund budget amendments. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and unanimously passed to recommend approval of the one oh one general purpose fund budget amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Motion approved.
Commissioner Hunter makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Revvis seconds it. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogles?
B, Sheriff in Blowey's Cloud in the lounge request. Sheriff's employee allowance request. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor and seconded by Commissioner Ewen, and unanimously passed to recommend approval of the sheriff's employee allowance allowance.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner King makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Britt seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
C. Financials presented for approval for acceptance is attached, and we had a motion by Commissioner Ogilvy, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and unanimously passed to recommend approval of acceptance of the financials as presented.
Would entertain a motion accepting those as received. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Ravis seconds. Any questions? All in favor of acknowledging accepting those, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
D. 2023 health insurance cost analysis is attached. A motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Ogilvy, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the county absorbing the increase of 7.5% aggregated cost for the 2023 state health insurance plan and employees enrolled in Network P absorbing the surcharge and premiums.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
So moved.
Commissioner Spry makes a motion. Commissioner Hunter seconds. Any questions on this item or discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
There have been no further bids to be presented. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and unanimously passed to adjourn. We're specifically submitted to the August 22 regular session of the County Legislature Body, D. Crown Chairman, Donnie Ogilvy Secretary, and Vicky Trenum Recording Secretary. That's all we have left to tell.
Thank you, Commissioner Ogilvy. Next item, No Republics. Madam Clark.
Of Constance Pritchard and Penny Parker by Commissioner Bryant, Samantha Jones by Commissioner Thorpe, Rosa Lopez and Rosinda Lopez by Commissioner Jean, Lanning Riepel by Commissioner Ewen, E. Nicole Binger by Commissioner Haynes, Marie C. McNeese by Commissioner Cunningham, Alicia Marbury by Commissioner Sanders, Pam Bottom by Commissioner Sanders, Stephanie Britt by Commissioner Taylor.
Any additions? Entertain a motion for approval of that list. Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Young seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval of that list, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. New business. I have one item on there was consideration for approval of bond of the trustee, Mary Jane Porter. You should have received a copy of a power of attorney for that insurance policy. A short explanation on there. The bond amount is a percentage of all of our budget cost on there, which is about seventy-something million dollars of, is based on a percentage. The total cost of this bond over four years is $11,956. All other elected officials that receive monies in their office, they're covered under our insurance policy. Few years ago, our insurance policy stepped up and we were not required to get a bond for all those offices. This is the only office that handles all the money that the county receives. So I would entertain a motion for the approval of that bond if you seek this.
So moved.
Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor seconds. Any questions on this? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Would entertain any other new business, the mission seeks fit at this time.
Mr. Chairman, just got a question.
Yes, sir.
Wonder where we are with animal shelter again. I know we had a updated budget coming.
Yes, sir. We are still working. Kevin Owens was the city administration minister. Let me write this down. He is kind of leading that. We are studying. We have two people that are working on what our needs are for animal control through him. We continue to help them. We've had an air-conditioned unit that went out. We made sure that was back working. And today, we had a request to pick up some animals. And under my authority, on my discretionary, I gave them the rights to pick up those and house those animals, and we would pay for it. I don't know because they had to get the sheriff's approval to go on this property. It relates to a crime. So I don't know where that individual circumstance is at this time.
I know the city had put out some bids to get some employees or employees that.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything happening with that?
No, sir. We're moving in parallel worlds on this. We're, you know, if we have to go where it's a city-counting animal control only, or if we do something that we're still working on as the Humane Society doing to animal control, we're not giving up any options at this time. Commissioner Bryant?
I spoke to the person who's been with animal shelter for years. Been an advocate of that for years. And the word is still not out there that on the county, we have some significant plans to help the shelter this particular year, this upcoming year. So it would be my wish that the folks would, I make people aware that they're in charge out there of the plans that the county has, that they, because they're still not.
The discussion with, and the city and, I'm the only representative that's representing the county on this, we are, you know, we do have the money appropriated for helping that physical facility. There are needs out there far as safety and modernization of it, and that money is there that we've set aside for that particular use. When we get to the point in the direction we know we're headed, we're going to be making the improvements to that facility, whoever's running animal control. I can assure you that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
Make motion.
Who made a motion? Did you?
I wanted to say something.
Oh, okay. I recognize Commissioner. You're okay. It hasn't been seconded, Commissioner Bradford. I recognize Commissioner Ogilvy.
I'm going out there calling the leaders. John Rich.
You owe me time, you.
No, don't. I just wanted to congratulate the ones that I've been elected to be Commissioner for this next term, and you've got a great responsibility. And it's a lot of fun sometimes, but I've always been able to work through it. And I want to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to be the secretary for several years. I think I've been secretary for about 26 years, but it's been a privilege for me to serve in that capacity. And I've always looked at the commission kind of like I did at farming. Back when I was a kid, growing up, I had 11 brothers or 10 brothers and sisters. So there was a good bit of farming going on in our family. And we, when I was, when I was a kid, we started out, I started out, not actually applying to the horse and mule, but I seen it done. My father done it. And the things that have changed in farming over the last 60, 70 years have been, you don't know what to change. We went from, we went from a horse and mule day. We fed our own hogs and we milked our own cows. You know, I had a good, long conversation with Miss Shirley one night on the phone. She called me several times, but we got, she was my cotton picking buddy, I guess you'd say. I don't know anybody else in here that might have picked cotton by hand, but I did, and she did. But she could, she could tell you all of the ins and outs of everything as far as the handwork that was done on the farm. But we fed hogs. Doug, we was one of the best recyclers in the country. We recycled the water. We fed our hogs corn, but we fed them the dishwater. We fed them anything that might have a nutritional value to it. They got it. And then we recycled that hog to dent. We eat it and then started to process all over. Well, that's just the way we done. We milk, we milked cows every day. We milked in the morning, we milked and ate them, and then we go to cotton picking. And that was our daily routine. But we moved from that time to now, where we don't pick cotton by hand anymore. We pick it with a six-row cotton picker instead of picking a bale a day. They pick 150 bales a day with one picker. But that picker costs $850,000, you know. Looked at what a mule cost was. But, but I've always kind of looked at that with, with the county commission. When I started on the county commission in 1978, we met on a Monday morning. We, we met every three months. We got $25 for a meeting, $15 for a committee meeting. And it's gone now. We don't, we don't have everything in the judge's office. That's where we met. The Budget Committee met in the judge's office, and they conducted the business behind closed doors, where you couldn't get away with that now if you wanted to. But, but it's changed. Everything's changed. We got, we got iPads now. We did it all by hand. Me and Mr. Bobby Sims, Ed's daddy, we'd have a budget meeting, and the next day, we'd sit down and it'd take us half a day or three quarters of day just to do the minutes, and then we'd get it all handled out to everybody. But that was, that was what we done. But now we got iPads that we look at, and it, and it sure has, I guess, less of the paperwork for sure. I don't know if it is like some of the others. Me and Miss Shirley didn't like it as well, I'll just tell you. We had a hard time getting used to that iPad. But I wanted to tell you a little joke. This, this couple, they go to Florida every year, and on their way home from Florida, they would start at this particular rest stop that they made. And then, and at that rest stop, they had helicopter rides. Those helicopter rides are $20 a piece. And they, they pulled in, they pulled in one year, and John said, Irma, I'd like to go on helicopter ride this year. And Irma said, John, them helicopter rides are $20 a piece, and we came forward. So they went on up the road. Well, next year, the same thing. They pulled in, and John said, Irma, I'd like to go on helicopter ride this year. And Irma said, John, them helicopter rides are $20 a piece, and we came forward. So they went on up the road. Well, done that year after year after year. One year, they pulled in, and John said, Irma, I'm 75 years old. Said, I'd like to go on helicopter ride this year. And John said, Irma, and Irma said, John, $20, it's $20, and we came forward. Well, the pilot was over here in their conversation, and he said, I tell you what I'm going to do. He said, I'll, I'll take y'all up and show you the sights. And if you don't say anything while you're up there, it won't cost you. But if you talk, it's going to cost you $20. But, well, John said, Irma, what do you think about that? And Irma said, well, John, you've been doing this a long time. Said, that's it, too. So the pilot carried him up, or he carried him out to the helicopter, put him in the helicopter, put him in the back. He strapped him in, he put the headphones on him, and he, he said, he got, he put the headphones on him so if they talked, he could hear, and, and he could talk to them. Well, they got up in the air, and he showed them all the sights he could think of, done everything he could think of, get them to talk. They hadn't said a word. And pilot thought to himself, you know, I'm going to say, he said, they ain't said nothing. I'm going to see what I can do about that. So he started doing all kinds of activated moves. He flew upside, down, sideways. He done everything he could think of, give them to say something, and they still wouldn't talk. The pilot said, thought to himself, he said, well, they might as well land, they're not going to talk. So he get on the ground, and the pilot said, you know, we've been up there a long time. We done a lot of different things, seen a lot of different things. He said, I can't believe y'all didn't say one word while you was up there. And John says, well, I started to say something when Irma fell out. I said, I started. And I want, I got two thoughts I want to leave you with. That was the first thought, $20 is $20. But this is my second thought. And this was written by a farmer. It's about wisdom. He said, he worked on the land, a farmer by trade. He never will know the impact he made when plowing the fields. His mind would be filled with lessons of life he taught and instilled. Life's pretty simple, my grandpa would claim. The rules we should live by are always the same. We delivered his thoughts, and he delivered his thoughts in a weary kind of style. You'd think he was mad, but then he smiled. He was always profound, a man of his word. He would always look forward despite that what occurred. I've never preached anything I didn't first sow. The seeds that you plant, it's the crop that will grow. Fix your eyes on the spot if you want to plow straight. If you need to start over, it's never too late. One thing I remember, he often would share, don't tear down a fence till you know why it's there. Some fences are built to keep danger away. Some fences are built so we'll know where to stay. His philosophy in life was to let people be. I'm not here to judge, at least they should judge me. Some things are better off left on the ground. Manure doesn't stink till you stir it around. The best thing he taught me was how I could find the answer to anything crossing my mind. Whatever I'd ask him, he'd get out the book saying, God wrote it down if you take time to look. So if you want the answer, you know where to go. And my thoughts was, $20 is $20, and you know where to get your answers.
I don't know if anybody wants to follow, Donnie, but the floor is still open for any comments and, one of the things that, John?
I can't follow Donnie, but I'd like to say a little something. Just for reference, Commissioner Ogilvy and Commissioner Graham were serving their third term when I was born. Congratulations, and I appreciate your service, and I appreciate the honor of serving each and one of many. Many of us, we've served on committees together, but the knowledge and wisdom I gain from each of you is priceless, and I appreciate it very much. It's just been a great honor to be a servant for the people of district. And I appreciate it very much. If I can help in any way, feel free to call. If I can help in any way, feel free to call me. Congratulations to the newcomers. Just remember, the beer board is the best committee.
Steve?
How do you follow those? Just, just a quick thought though. Once you know, I've worked with a lot of, lot of wonderful people over the years and it's just been an honor to serve.
Lady?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say, thank you to everyone of you. Four years ago, I knew I wasn't probably going to stick another term and I thought how easy I knew this night would come. I thought how easy it was going to be for me to say, but I like to say now, not easy at all.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hunter?
I would just like to say it's been a, been a journey, been a pleasure and an honor to serve all of them. Really enjoyed it, learned a whole lot, made some real good friends here and you'll be missed, but I'll still be around. Like to say thank you for district board, for the time that I got to serve. I'll still be here if you have any questions. Be glad answering questions. Thank y'all.
Anyone else? Commissioner King?
Hey, don't call me because I'm going to move to a term.
Anybody else? Thank y'all. I will, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We will have a formal get-together and celebrate the service to Lincoln County for the ones that are retiring, but also incorporate the viewers being in that celebration too at that time. So look forward to that. Would entertain a motion. As the last motion, I don't know if this will be, but Commissioner King and his long service makes a motion for adjournment. Also, Commissioner Ogilvy, seconded. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.